Ladies and gentlemen, we are back. Like I told you, we was coming back with an Adrian Broner film study review. And... This is gonna be interesting. And the reason why it's gonna be interesting is because... The reason why I picked this particular fight is because... Adrian Broner, to me... It's something that he has to show. He has to show more, more skill, more ability. More so than any fight he's had. Because Mikey Garcia is something that you don't play with. Mikey possesses power, Mikey possesses speed, um, and, and he's very smart. But... I picked this fight against him and Shawn Porter only because... I saw things in Adrian Broner that a lot of people did not speak about in this fight against Shawn Porter, which will be very, very vital in what he could use against Mikey Garcia. Now, I'm not talking about all the holding and Shawn Porter, you know, being all in his chest like a dog. But it was more so... Of what Adrian... Could do as far as him letting his hands go, getting on two to three punch combination against a guy like Mikey Garcia. He has to have a high work ratio in order for him to get an opportunity to win this fight. And right there is what's more important than anything, Adrian Broner getting off to a fast start more so than a slow start. But... We're gonna hop right on in it, we're gonna go straight into the film room and watch this fight.
And now set to make his way to the ring, Showtime, Shawn Porter!
This is gonna be good though. And one thing that stands out to me in this fight alone... Was when Broner really became Broner in the latter rounds. He's damn near unstoppable. But it wasn't enough in this fight in particular. But... He can do this against Mikey Garcia, and he's fighting at 140 pounds. So he's gonna come in as the naturally bigger guy against Mikey. Whereas in this fight, after rehydration, Shawn Porter was the bigger guy. Shawn Porter came in at like 161 that night versus Porter who came in at like in the, in the 150s. So I think Broner's gonna rehydrate well against Mikey Garcia, and I believe Mikey Garcia... Will be the smaller guy. But this is what I love about Adrian, man. He has the persona, the swag.
He's beaten only once in his career and he thinks he is the heir apparent to Floyd Mayweather.
But he's undefeated from 140 pounds and below, he hasn't lost a fight. So he's going into this fight really undefeated against Mikey Garcia.
But despite the flashiness, he says that he trains as if he's broke to give himself the sense of urgency to be ready to fight. And he feels he is the centerpiece of a new era in boxing, Adrian Broner.
You'll see in the tale of the tape of what I was talking about when Adrian Broner was the smaller guy in this fight. And you see Shawn Porter coming in at 161 to Broner's 157. But I, I just want you to see a few things from Adrian Broner like I was saying earlier. When he gets off his two to three punch combinations, how, how effective he is and how a lot of fighters back off of him. And yes, Amy, I'm going to make you like AB before it's all said and done.
And Dave Moretti and the referee in charge of the action, Tony Weeks. And now introducing first, the red corner, he wears the blue, gold and red. His professional record near perfect, 25 wins, just one loss with one draw, 16 victories coming by way of knockout. Originally from Cleveland, Ohio, he fights out of Las Vegas, the former welterweight champion, Showtime, Shawn Porter! And across the ring is adversary fighting out of the blue corner, he wears the gold and white. As a professional, he too stands near perfect, 30 victories, just one loss, 22 wins coming by way of knockout from Cincinnati, Ohio.
Broner was talking about him getting back to... The old Broner. The about boxing Broner, not about billions Broner. He took his camp back to Colorado Springs. And I believe that's gonna do justice for Broner.
Okay gentlemen, you both receive your instructions in your dressing room. Okay, right here is good, ain't giving you that slow. Right here is good, ain't giving that slow. I want a good clean fight, obey my commands at all times above all, protect yourselves at all times.
But when Tony Weeks talk about a clean fight, man, Shawn Porter is not the guy that'll give you a clean fight. And we saw that with this fight against Andrew Burdo a couple of weeks ago.
In Las Vegas and on NBC, early March, that unanimous 12 round decision over John Molina, who never did get into it. Shawn Porter, 25 and one with one draw, 16 by knockout. His last fight back in mid-March, he knocked out Eric Bonet in round five. Bonet, a late substitute for, yes, Robert Garcia.
The key for Broner in this fight for him... Of what more so he needed to do in order to get the victory was to get up to a fast start, and he could not do that. But the hand speed is gonna be on display on this Saturday against Mikey Garcia, I promise you that.
First round, big round, I mean, this is like guys trying to feel each other out, trying to get comfortable in the ring. They both are nervous, although they would not say that, they are nervous. Uh, there's a lot on the line here, um, this is about bragging rights, authority, just a matter of time.
Another thing that Broner did not do in this fight is utilize the jab. The jab was not effective, and that's why Shawn Porter was able to get inside this whole fight.
And these days, fights between former champions in their twenties is, is relatively rare. As we mentioned earlier for Broner, this is only the third time.
For Broner. We're gonna do a show one, uh, on our picks on next week, right before the fight.
Probably Friday night. Pulled straight out, got caught on the chin with a left hook by Shawn Porter, and you see the physical strength of Adrian on the inside immediately grabbing onto Shawn because he was affected by that punch right.
And Broner has gotten off to slow starts followed by strong finishes.
Amy's going reverse here.
Perhaps Porter trying to take advantage as Marcos Madonna did. And that convincing win over Broner knocked him down a couple of times.
See, we needed to see more of that jab from Broner in order to keep Shawn Porter at bay, and he was not able to do that.
And now the referee, Tony Weeks, able to get them apart.
Nice left hand by Porter.
This type of fight is gonna be effective for Porter to make it physical.
But if we talk a little bit about Shawn Porter, Shawn Porter is getting ready to be in the title eliminator again. With fighting Danny Garcia perhaps. Um, and to win again Keith Thurman. After Keith comes off of his elbow injury, he just got married, and he's at the top of the welterweight division right now. So Shawn looks to see if he can erase that loss to Thurman. But you see Broner holding Porter because he don't want Porter to get off, and he did a lot of that in this fight.
He's waiting for the opportunity to really get to Tom, because that's when he comes into play because of his hand speed. He's waiting to Tom those punches.
You see him coming with that counter left hook every time Porter does anything. Porter can shoot the jab, it's a left hook, the right hand, left hook. What Porter's doing very well, he's dropping underneath that shot and it's getting Adrian out balance, so he can't come back with the second punch.
And right with that left hook that missed, we saw the hand speed of Broner.
He's such a natural, he's a gifted boxer, I mean, I mean, you can't argue with that.
And you hear what Sugar Ray is saying, that he's so natural, and the fact that he's natural with it. It's like he doesn't have to force himself to do anything, he just have to do it. And with Broner, he just don't do it in the early rounds. And so when the fight comes down to the hand of the judges, him not being active in those rounds is the reason why he lose fights. Well, this is why he lost this particular fight to Shawn Porter. We all know what happened in his other fight against Marcos Madonna. But he can't let that, he can't let this fight go the distance with Mikey Garcia, and he been in that. In the beginning rounds.
Porter has to be very careful because as he reaches in, that's when Broner can count, counter that with the right hand or left hook. You notice his hands, Porter, he comes in with his hands down.
Now it has Porter against the ropes.
We'll see if Tony Weeks continues to let Adrian Broner just grab a hold of Shawn and hold him like that. You know, that's something I think Tony's gonna have to take control of. Nice shot by Shawn Porter.
Big right hand, try to go to it again.
You see Adrian to make sure to really push the head down of Shawn Porter when he gets inside, gets close, so he can't come up with combinations.
See, this is where Adrian should be letting his hands go. See, but when he throw two to three punch combinations, that hand speed, I'm telling you, he can be very dangerous.
So Paul Pierce, now there's the real truth. I know Errol Spence calls himself the truth, and I asked him yesterday, was there a fee involved to pay the future Hall of Famer of the Washington Wizards?
In the second round, I noticed that Broner's really, again, I gotta say this over and over again, he's trying to time.
We never was able to see him get off with that jab. That's why Shawn is able to get inside and he has to hold, because Shawn is not respecting Broner's jab.
It's the second time he's lifted up that right forearm and he's put it right in the throat of Shawn Porter. So, uh, it'll be interesting to see what Tony Weeks does when they get in those clinches and, and Adrian, if he continues to do that.
They saying it was more so of Adrian trying to time Porter, but I think it was more so of Adrian just trying to be a counter, counter punch.
He's trying, but it's very difficult when Adrian's got pushing your head down and then also got that forearm in your throat, it can be very tough. So Adrian's doing the right tactics, but we'll see how long he's able to get away with those tactics.
But Porter, he leaves with the left and he's able to get inside and he's gonna maul you constantly.
That was a firm warning, Marv. He told him, hey, listen, stop the holding, he took a break, he didn't just mention it in between the clinch, he actually stopped the action.
Nice left hand. But you see Shawn just stays in front of you. High work weight.
Little bit of head move from Shawn Porter, very effective so far.
I mean, Porter can keep this up, anti-fight. It could be good.
See, there you go, leading the game with that left hand to get himself inside. He does that consistently throughout this fight.
I mean, for him to just stay in the chest of Broner would really be effective.
And you could hear Sugar Ray saying the same, same thing, did he? If you stay in the chest of Broner, it could be very effective, because Broner is not gonna do anything but hold. But fighting against Danny Garcia, I believe Broner is gonna be more so the aggressive one, only because Vegas have him a five to one underdog. And on top of that, he knows he's gonna have to get up to an early start against Mikey Garcia. But Broner will have great power at 140 pounds, more so than what he did at 147.
Very good tactic by Adrian, every time they get close, he extends those arms.
Nice right hook by Broner.
Underneath the throat of Shawn Porter, it doesn't allow Shawn to get off, so very smart by, by Adrian.
See, but that's, that's what Broner has to double up on his punches.
And this was something we talked about before the fight, Porter's gotta get inside, when he gets inside, he's gotta work.
See, but that right there was more so a Broner slipping than anything. But this is where Shawn tries to maul you.
You see Adrian really holding on the inside, I mean, he's really grabbing a hold of him hard in there, it's blatant.
Porter has been the aggressor right from the start, and once again, they have to be separated.
Broner was able to get off that check, left hook, but it wasn't able to land where he wanted it to land. But he's trying to take a blueprint from what Kell Brook did to Shawn Porter before this fight.
With Steve, what is your evaluation of what, what is going on here in terms of how Tony Weeks is handling this?
Slow him down.
Tony's an excellent referee, but I think he's too liberal with Adrian. All we have seen is four rounds of fouls and holding and forearms. Uh, there should be points starting to be taken away because he hasn't engaged.
And again, you see the hold by Broner, let's see how Weeks handles this one, no?
See, but that is where Broner is going, a lot of holding. But like I said, when Shawn leaves with the left, and he gets inside, he wins every time. So Broner has no choice but to hold.
Tony's gonna take control, he always does, but a lot of holding so far through the first four rounds, right?
You know, I'm looking here, yeah, here, here, once again, well, it was anticipated, the holding and clinching, which is smart from Broner's standpoint.
And this is exactly where Shawn Porter's gotta be right there.
But this is why Shawn wins rounds, because his high work rate. He's relentless. But Broner is never able to get the jabs off in order to keep Shawn at bay. So when you're not utilizing the jab, young fighters, if you're watching this, if you're not utilizing your jab, fighters like Shawn Porter are gonna get inside every single time.
Round five, but round four, Porter threw 65 punches, landing 19, Broner throwing 21 and landed.
And you hear that, 65 to 21 punches? Shawn being more of the aggressive, and that is why he won this fight against Broner. Broner didn't pick it up to the latter rounds, which you're gonna see.
And you see a much more alert Adrian Broner coming out here in this fifth round. He jumped off a stool, ran out of the corner and touched Shawn a couple of shots early.
Now, let's check in with Kenny. All right, thank you, Marv, I'm with Kenny Porter, Shawn's trainer and his father, what do you think of the fight so far, Kenny?
I think we're doing good, we, the plan played out like we wanted the first two rounds to get him, to get confident that we weren't coming after him, that he would fight a little bit, and it's playing out that way for me.
What do you think's gonna happen now the rest of the way that works out for your son?
Uh, we gonna overwhelm him, we just gonna take control, we gonna wear him down.
Are you gonna finish?
And you heard what Kenny Porter said, we just gonna wear him down, we gonna overwhelm him and wear him down. And that's what they did throughout this whole fight. Tried to get inside of Broner because Broner jab was not effective. Like you see right there, Broner is not getting the jab off, he's waiting for Shawn to commit to something so that he can throw a counter. He didn't let his hands go. No jabs, no jabs, no jabs. No jabs.
You know, definitely a smart move for Team Porter to bring Shane Mosley into camp, and Adrian Broner's having a much better round this, the beginning of this round. He came out really sharp and was landing some nice shots, so Shawn's gotta move Adrian back to the ropes, get him trapped there, bang the body, finish up top.
Now, when I was watching this fight with, with, uh, one of my friends, we was talking about if Broner had, uh, not Broner, but if Porter was able to have an overhand right like Marcos Madonna in this fight, could he have dropped Adrian Broner? If he tuning in right now, if Shawn Porter had an overhand right to his game, do you think he would have dropped Broner in this fight? You can let me know in the comments.
Came out very sharp with the jab and nice counter shots, and on my scorecard, he's, he's ahead so far through this fifth round.
See, but there's no jab from Broner. And so when you, when you're, when you're fighting like Broner and you're already down five rounds, which people would say, he was down 5-0, me, I had him down, I had him winning like one round out of the five. But this is why people say Broner is a very slow starter.
Well, Marv, it's an ugly fight, and sometimes ugly fights make for ultimately ugly scorecards. Um, it's Porter won the third and fourth and the first very clearly. Broner, I think I agree with BJ, took the fifth round by landing shots as Porter came in.
But you see that left hand by Shawn that landed on Broner.
These kind of rounds to try to discern which punches are effective, because it's a very, very sloppy.
But the left jab by Porter is what gets him started on Broner.
And Porter has, has come out strong here in the sixth.
So Shawn gets him in close, he's trying to work the body, Adrian puts the hands behind the head of Shawn and then pushes off, so he didn't actually grab hold that time. He's not comfortable in there, Marv, but he's gotta stay on the outside if he wants to win this fight.
But one thing about Broner, um, Devante saying he thinks he's a young Mayweather. Well, one thing about Broner, 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 he's, he's his own guy. But he don't get his shots up like Mayweather does. And when we do Floyd Mayweather film review, you will see Floyd utilizing the jab. He's able to keep his, his fighters in front of him, he's able to control the ring, he has great ring generalship. But when you watch a guy like Adrian Broner, the use of a jab is not even there. Times where he could have thrown a jab and controlled the fight with Shawn Porter, he did not do it.
Ray, you saw that press conference that took place a couple of days ago as Broner referred to Porter as just a football player. He was an excellent football player in high school.
But one thing Broner does do is move around the ring. A lot of people say he's flat footed, Floyd even came out and said he's flat footed. But he, he has great footwork. With great defensive skills, but he never lets his hands go. See, you see the jab, boom, he should double up on the jab, throw some fakes. He don't miss anything up.
Beautiful work by Shawn Porter, right when Kenny Porter said, hey, give me that jab, Shawn Porter gave it to Adrian right in the nose, and that was a hard jab, Ray.
And following round six, Al Michaels will be talking with heavyweight titleist Deontay Wilder coming off his first defense, knocked out in a very game Eric Molina last weekend in Birmingham. Let's go to Al.
And I think 2016 would, would, would could be a perfect year for that to happen.
Man, shots out, uh, to Deontay Wilder, setting up this fight with Luis Ortiz. Man, that's gonna be an awesome fight. For the heavyweight division, we get Luis Ortiz versus Deontay Wilder, come on now. We getting all the fights we want as Fight fans. See, but here is where we need to see Broner working.
And I think, Marv, this is a very big round for both fighters, because I gave Shawn the last round, I gave Adrian the round before that. You wanna see one fighter get momentum and start to win a couple of rounds in a row, so it shows us a really good close fight, and if you're Shawn Porter or Adrian Broner, you really wanna try to make the seventh round.
He's allowing. Shout out to my boy Key. And, and you're right. He's lacking head movement. But you hear Daniel Jacobs saying the same thing that I've been telling you guys, and shots out to Danny Jacobs. But he needs to get back to using the jab. His jab would have been so effective in this fight against Shawn Porter. And if he would have won this fight with Shawn Porter, he would have definitely won it off the scoring with the jab, because it was there all night.
Absolutely, absolutely, twice behind the head, definite foul.
And you know, Marv, I think anytime there's an intentional foul, you obviously gotta take a point away, but I don't know if it was, uh, I, I couldn't really get a good angle from where I was sitting if he, if he was really, it was more of a backhand.
See, Shawn Porter's able to get inside.
You know, hit right behind the head, so I couldn't really tell, but I think it's frustration from Adrian Broner.
You know, normally Broner would have figured out his opponent and really come on strong, but because of the strength of Porter and the dedication and the ferocity, he's making this very difficult for Adrian Broner.
I try my best not to speak when the great Sugar Ray is giving off gems to what it is we're seeing in fights. But like he talked about, the dedication from Shawn Porter to what it is that he's doing to Broner and the relentlessness that he has. That's what give Porter the opportunity to get the punches off that he wants to get off. See, but that's, see, he, he don't let his hands go.
And as you heard, Hall of Fame referee Steve Smogu is with us for rules interpretations, he said he would have taken a point away from Broner.
Joshua versus Wilder, well, we won't get that one until perhaps maybe the end of the year, two years from now.
Farhood had that as a 10-9 round for Broner.
There's a lot going on in the heavyweight division.
Shawn Porter, twenty-seven years old, says he's representing.
But nice right hand by Porter. He's able to get in and work the body a little bit of Broner.
And Adrian Broner, who comes off the, the wood over John Molina, thirty and one, twenty-two by knockout, but most of those knockouts have not come as of late. In his earlier days, he had ten first-round KOs. And getting back to the possibility of the referee, Tony Weeks taking.
Nice right hand by Broner. But if you seen him follow it with the left hook, man. You hear him talking about that. But that left hook by Broner, that, that punch lands. And I've seen it land in a lot of his fights.
His knockout percentage has gone down a little bit as he's moved up in weight.
And, and Marv asked me about the, uh, training and about endurance with this guy. I mean, he, Porter is so amazing because he told me yesterday about his training regimen. He does a pre-fight camp, then a fight camp, then a post-fight camp. I mean, he's so dedicated that he'll need that endurance in these later rounds.
No, he's always in shape, Ray. There's no question about that. Just gotta see if he's able to put his game plan to use here.
You see Porter getting off three, four punches.
And really work against Adrian. It seems like Adrian's getting a little more space.
Versus the one or two coming from Broner.
I see Adrian getting into a bit of rhythm here in round eight.
Ooh, nice right hand by Broner.
I expected him to slow down a little bit, but, um, Porter's not slowed down. Still aggressive, still in the chest of Broner.
And as Broner told us, uh, yesterday, he, he claimed he would not be bothered by the fast pace, but he was early on, the pace that Porter set.
Broner's so gifted. I mean, really, this young man can really fight. Has so, so many incredible natural attributes, physical attributes.
Nice right hand, left hook by Broner, followed by the right hand. Nice left hand by Broner. See, this is where we're gonna start seeing Broner turn up, right? He's getting stronger as the fight goes on, but the thing is, he started out too slow. If this was, if we was getting this Broner in the early rounds, by the time we hit round nine, and he was working the jab and getting off two to three punch combinations, Shawn Porter would be on his back foot right now. And that's right, Key. He is throwing wide-angle punches like Chino. But like I said, I asked, I asked you all the question earlier. If he would've had the overhand right in his game, and I'm talking about Shawn Porter, if he would've added the overhand right to his game, do you think he would've dropped Adrian Broner? Ooh, nice left hook by Broner. Now you're starting to see the hand speed of Broner. He's in the rhythm. He's feeling good.
Shawn's gotta disrupt that rhythm by moving forward, moving his head, touching Adrian to the body and getting his hands free when he gets on the inside.
See, but the jab is not there. That's why Shawn is able to get inside.
Porter trying to go to the body and again, the clinch leads to Tony Weeks separating the two boxes.
And on the clinch before, Marv, sorry to interrupt you. You just saw, you know, Adrian just blatantly grabbed him with both hands, and most referees will not allow that to take place like that.
See, right there when Shawn becomes stationary, that's where I think Broner should really hit off on him, but he's not.
Mike Stafford in the Broner corner. Mike, the pace of this fight, is it going the way you thought it would?
Yes, I thought it was. I thought we, you know, Shawn's coming out strong, trying to strengthen strong. Now, now we trying to take, pick him apart, using a jab, using a combination, letting him run into everything.
How close do you think this fight is? Are you saying much to Adrian about that?
We telling him it's a, it's a close fight. We don't know what the judges thought, but you know, he, he looks like he's getting ready to be in his rhythm now. We just trying to, you know, make sure he, uh, finishes the job.
Thanks, Mike. Marv, guys, do you agree with the thoughts of Mike Stafford?
See, with Mike Stafford, I don't see where he's talking about them getting off with the jab and, and shots with the combinations. I, I didn't see it.
Effective aggressiveness, and, uh, he's standing in his chest. Broner has not had the opportunity to really figure this out. He's not throwing a volume of punches.
But like I said, Broner's defense is amazing. But the offense needs to complement the defense. And especially against Mikey Garcia. If Broner steps out of place one time, Garcia accuracy with the punches and the punch combinations that he throws, which we're gonna see when we do a film study on Mikey Garcia. The punch combinations that he throws are very effective and they land. Now, is his power gonna carry over from one thirty-five to one forty? That I don't know. I'm not sure about. We will see come July twenty-ninth. But this fight right here alone. Broner had amazing defensive footwork. He just can't put himself out of position to not capitalize. But nice left hook by Broner right there.
Adrian landed a nice counter-left hook on the ropes there, and you know, it just shows the toughness like Ray was saying. You know, Adrian's got a great chin, but immediately after he got hit with that big overhand right, he landed a nice counter-left hook himself. You know, very sharp fighter, and both guys are very hungry.
Nice left hook by Shawn.
Remember, Adrian Broner went down twice against Marcos Madonna back in December two thousand thirteen. That fight in San Antonio the first two times in Broner's career that he hit the canvas.
Porter, Porter now starting to pose a little bit too long. He's waiting too long in the pocket.
And you hear the great Sugar Ray speaking on what it is I talked about a few minutes ago. Shawn Porter became a stationary target, but Broner never let his hands go.
Coming up out of minute left of this tenth round.
But you see Shawn working inside. Those punches are being scored.
Today's premier boxing champions will continue at eleven o'clock Eastern time on NBCSN. Log on to NBCSports.com to find the channel in your area. That'll be live boxing coming up, eleven o'clock Eastern time.
And you see, Marv, in these close rounds like this, very important that both guys, when they're on the inside, when there's low time, you free your hands and you continue to work to show the judges that you want those points and you wanna land the harder shots. Good shot by Shawn Porter.
Nice shot by Porter.
Adrian Broner holding again.
But you see that overhand right? He's trying to land. But you see Broner trying to get off with that check left hook.
On to round eleven, and Porter's had only two fights go past ten. He beat Devin Alexander in twelve rounds back in two thousand thirteen and lost to Kell Brook in twelve in two thousand and fourteen. That's.
But these two rounds right here is where Adrian really shows that he's Adrian Broner.
In a very bloody fight. And that coming off the stoppage of Paul Malanagi in the fourth round in April of two thousand fourteen as Porter came up with two knockdowns.
He showed almost all facets of his game. In the eleventh and twelfth round.
Deciding factors here for both fighters, depending how they, the judges are scoring.
And I've got Porter ahead, Ray, but I think that if you're in the corner of Adrian Broner, you know, you gotta say, listen, you gotta win both these rounds. But also, if you're in the corner of Shawn Porter, you gotta say, we need at least one or two of these last rounds to make sure that we really put a nail in the coffin.
Be aggressive. Yes, stay aggressive.
And as you saw, the unofficial scorecard of Steve Farhood, he has.
See, and that's the thing. Like Broner could not be as aggressive.
And I guarantee all the judges have it scored somewhere in that range, Marv, but these last two rounds could really be a big factor in who wins this fight.
It's a nice counter right hand by Broner.
Porter trying to lead in with that jab.
Will continue at eleven o'clock Eastern on NBCSN. That's live boxing. You can log on to NBCSports.com to find the channel in your area. We're approaching a minute left in the eleventh, and again, you see the holding on the part of Broner. And he hears it from the crowd.
See, but even Floyd Mayweather talks about holding. If you go back and watch the fight of Devante Davis, before he fought Avila, Floyd was in the locker room telling him, hey, holding is a part of the game. If I have to hold you so that you don't get your shots off, then I'm gonna hold you. And we see Adrian Broner doing the same as that theme. But the thing is, Broner was not allowing his offense to make up for all the holding that he's doing.
I see Adrian pushing him down, trying to do anything to blunt the momentum of Porter. I think Tony's gonna take a point right here.
But yeah, he took a point away from Broner in the eleventh round. But Tony Weeks is a great referee. Some say he stopped that fight with Kovalev versus Ward a little bit too early. But pay attention, Broner's gonna land a knockdown right here in this round, flush. Check left hook by Broner on Shawn Porter. And this is what we needed to see from Broner this whole fight. We see that the power was there. It landed flush. A lot of people saying it was more so it was Shawn being caught off guard. But that's what we needed to see from Broner.
Unbelievable. Broner did what champions do. You can never count a champion out. Surprise him to us, to the fans, and to Porter.
And we talked about that yesterday. Adrian's the one who's got the tendency to pull his right hand away from his face when that left hook comes. Shawn Porter did it right there, and Adrian Broner really made him pay.
See, but as you see throughout this whole entire fight, that Adrian Broner, he could've done this in the early rounds of this fight against Shawn Porter. But he didn't do it until the twelfth round. He didn't let his hands go until the twelfth round. But that check left hook from Broner is a powerful shot, and Mikey Garcia has to prepare for that shot because Broner's gonna let that left hook go.
This shows you the patience of a fighter, the patience of Broner. He waited for that opportunity, and when he presented himself, he took full advantage of it.
And Ray, I think he waited a little too long, though.
But I could've gave you that fight against Broner and Emmanuel Taylor when he did the same thing to Emmanuel Taylor. Started off slow. You really couldn't tell if Emmanuel Taylor was gonna win the fight or Adrian Broner was gonna win the fight. But then Broner comes with a knockout in the latter part of the fight, or a knockdown.
And it appears that Broner does need a knockout to stop it to win this fight.
See Adrian pushing Shawn's head down.
You know, Porter's doing the right thing. He's standing very close to Broner, but he don't allow him to get hit.
Smothering all of his big punches, and that's a good tactic by, by, uh, Shawn. It looks like Adrian had his chance. He had Shawn in a lot of trouble, and Shawn showed a lot of resolve to get out of that predicament, and, uh, he should win this fight, Ray.
Nice left hook to the body from Shawn Porter.
Ladies and gentlemen, having gone the distance, we'll go now to your judges' scorecards. Your first judge, Adelaide Byrd sees the fight one fourteen to one twelve. Judge Dave Moretti sees the fight one fifteen to one eleven. Your third and final judge, Eric Jeake scores the fight one eighteen to one oh eight.
See, the one eighteen to one oh eight. The one eighteen to one oh eight was very controversial, very controversial. But Adrian Broner. Adrian Broner to what Adrian Broner could have done to win this fight, as you can see, was let his hands go. He did not let, he did not let, um, the jab go. We saw the check left hook in the, in the twelfth round. The twelfth round, we saw the check left hook. But if you're Broner, you have to get off to an early start against Mikey Garcia. You have to set the tone on July twenty-ninth against Mikey Garcia. You do not allow Mikey to set the tone, and then you counter in the latter rounds of the fight. You're gonna lose if that fight goes to the scorecards. If you're Adrian Broner, you have to dominate early and keep the pace going on a guy like Mikey Garcia. Like I said, Mikey Garcia is very smart. He's very intelligent. He has a high IQ. Robert Garcia will put him in the best position to win and to be successful. But if you're Adrian Broner, if you come with your A-game and you let your hands go and you be the AB that we saw at one thirty, one thirty-five, and when you fought at one forty, you're gonna be, you're gonna be great. You're gonna do fine. And that's just what we hope to look for from Broner. But we did not see that in this film review, in this fight. And that's one thing that is a flaw to Broner, is him not getting off early. And I wanted to point that out to people, and that's the one thing that I was telling you guys that a lot of people was not talking about, is this thing right here. If Adrian Broner. What's up? Shout out to James, The Punch Line. Y'all guys, make sure y'all go and check out the show, The Punch Line with Kelly Pavlik and James Dominguez. Go ahead and subscribe right now. Follow them on social media at The Punch Line. They're gonna be live on Tuesday, I believe, at one o'clock. Go and check them out. Definitely great show, great show. But like I was saying, the one thing in particular with Adrian Broner that a lot of people is not talking about is him having that power at one forty. We didn't see it a lot at one forty-seven with his fight against Porter and, uh, Madonna. We saw a lot of heart. We saw a chin in, in this fight with Porter, but we didn't see a chin in his fight with Madonna. But we seen a lot of heart, and we seen a lot of flaws in his game. But we seen his great defensive skills, and I believe his defensive skills will be on display come Saturday night. But the thing is, will he let his hands go? We need to see a jab. We need to see that check left hook, followed by an uppercut. Two to three punch combinations for Adrian Broner. He can be deadly as a fighter, and that's what we need to see from him. Now, like you said, he's getting back to the old Adrian Broner, and I believe he's gonna do just that. And he talked about that, um, in his show about boxing. And I'm gonna show you guys that clip of what it is that he talked about right here. Welcome to the life of Adrian Broner. I always had this dream. I'm training for a big fight. The biggest challenge isn't the fighter or the fans or the pressure. It's much bigger than that. It's something inside of me that I gotta overcome, to challenge myself to be the best that I can be. Once I step a foot in that ring, at the end of the day, only I determine how far I go. Stop cutting corners, man. Only one could beat you is you. You gotta stop cutting corners. If you're Adrian Broner, cutting corners is not gonna get you to the top. Now, he did say to his defense, he took his camp back to Colorado Springs where he formerly trained when he was fighting at 135 and 140 pounds, when he was just dominating throughout boxing. He took it back to those roots. And I believe he's gonna, he's gonna be fine in this fight. But like James pointed out, he averages 27 punches per round at the wet weight division. That's not gonna win you anything. That's the lowest in the whole division. But he has to double that, triple that against a guy like Mikey Garcia, who does not have any respect for Broner whatsoever because he seen Broner in defeat. He was there when Broner lost to Chino Maidana. Mikey Garcia has the blueprint because Robert Garcia gave it to him. But like I said, it's, it's, it's gonna, it's gonna be a great day. It's gonna be a great day in boxing. And I'm just really looking forward to seeing these guys go at it. Now, we will be doing a film review on Mikey Garcia. I believe we're gonna do that show tomorrow. Haven't really chose the fight as of yet. Gonna sleep on it. If you guys do have an idea, maybe it will be his last fight because he does have that gap of, uh, being inactive for two years. And I believe he chance, I ain't gonna say he transformed his game since he's been back and won a title. But he's more deadlier than ever. Um, it's more accurate than I've seen Mikey Garcia in the beginning state.